And I would like to call to order the school committee meeting for Cohasset Public Schools on Wednesday, June 20th, 2018. As a reminder, all school committee meetings are televised and recorded. Could I have a roll call, please?
Paul Currie here.
Gina Stino present.
Ellen Mar present.
Jen Madden present.
Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anybody have any information that they'd like to bring forward? Okay. And then approval of the warrant. And do I have a motion to to accept warrant eighteen dash two-two F's?
So moved.
And a sec- do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
I, Jen Madden.
I'm sorry, we keep doing this.
We'll stop even if this works out.
I, Jen Madden.
I, Ellen Mar.
I, Gina Stino.
I, Paul Currie.
From now on, we're gonna start at your I think you've got the hunger in now.
Yeah. Just need a pen.
Oh, sure.
Just go to the chair.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so next is the superintendent's report.
Always start with a good note. We've seen Matheson here with Jen Sayer, and Yuvani is?
Is in Boston.
Boston, okay.
And we have a gift.
We like presents. So this is the result of the second semester of the spring grant cycle. We have checked for three thirty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars to fund the following grants. One is the addition of xylophones to the elementary rhythm band that's at the Osgood School with a wonderful new teacher, Mr. Bradley. The second is money to strengthen math fact influency, the digital license for the Reflex software program at Deer Hill School. And there is a grant for promoting the education for civic life in a democracy, so spreading the new social studies curriculum down to the Deer Hill and Osgood levels. And the last is especially heartwarming a grant to the Cohasset Middle School online newspaper that Donna Milia is starting at CMS. So those are all very near and dear to our heart, and we're very happy to be able to support those and look forward to seeing them in action in the fall.
So it's an online newspaper?
Yes. Yes, and they're using I'm sure you're hearing the thing too as well. They're using software that's available already through the yearbook and the high school newspaper, but it's gonna be specific to the middle school.
Well, that's excellent.
Very good.
The high school newspaper's already out one.
So and just
So is this a baby spinner or?
Nope, it's all new branding.
Maintained.
All identity.
Of the brand.
And that's great.
And we have a small request that I think you're heading into your next contract cycle. So it's a teacher stipend money to please consider or encourage inclusion of that into whatever the stipend pools are to be able to keep it going in the years ahead.
Thank you.
If there's anything else you need technologically,
we're more than happy to come back and provide some of that, too. Everybody was very excited about that.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Cindy? Yes, for your information, the teacher contract and all the stipends have already been settled.
Oh, okay. So whenever it opens?
Yeah.
That will be the thing. We've had
It'll be three more years. However, the contract, but
However, it will take to open it to continue that ongoing program.
That's great. Thank you for your generous
We'll try to avoid as much ongoing expenses and focus on the one time
Thanks so much for the generosity. We appreciate that.
It's like a great program.
Thank you.
The question was, does Ms. Milia have background in journalism?
She was a writer before she came to us as a educator.
She managed the Channel Seven newsroom. Was on the news.
Yeah.
This is her second career.
Good.
We know we're lucky to have her, too.
Yeah, we are.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll do our motion. So could I have a motion to accept the very generous gift from the CEF in the amount of thirty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars to cover the purchase of xylophones at the Osgood School and math facts program for Deer Hill School to promote civics at Deer Hill and Osgood and the Cohasset Middle School online newspaper?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
I, Paul Currie.
I, Barbara Steffens.
I, Gina Stino.
I, Ellen Mar.
I, Jen Madden.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very exciting.
A copy of, could we get a copy of what she gave you?
It needs a signature from Jen before we do when we have the signature. She said Jennifer's coming to sign it tomorrow.
Oh, okay, great.
Of the check or of the letter?
Of the letter.
I think it's the letter.
The letter, great.
We have two other guests who we have invited. Maura Sherry and is Tara with you?
She's not, so
Oh, okay.
And I thought instead of listening to me wax on, Patrick has brought his laptop and we're gonna show a very brief TED Talk, which is awesome, sums it all up.
All right, before you start, let me give you the little background.
Oh, okay.
So we have had several conversations. The last one was presently with both Gina and myself about later start time and the obstacles that we face and the survey from the high school. That we have open conversations, so it's been enlightening. But I invited Maura and Tara to give the information that she's already shared with some of the boards and that some of the presentations that have been given in the town, so that we can have some of that information that is out there. So there you go. Thank you.
And Patrick?
Can we play?
Yeah. That'd be great.
I wouldn't wanna mess up your laptop, so
Oh, you couldn't, no thanks. No worse than I did.
It's six o'clock in the morning. Pitch black outside. My fourteen-year-old son is fast asleep in his bed, sleeping the reckless, deep sleep of a teenager. I flip on the light and physically shake the poor boy awake because I know that, like looking off a Band-Aid, it's better to get it over with quickly. I have a friend who yells fire just to rouse her sleeping team, and another who got so fed up that she had to dump cold water on her son's head just to get him out of bed. Sound brutal, but perhaps familiar? Every morning, I ask myself, how can I, knowing what I know and doing what I do for a living, be doing this to my own son? You see, I'm a sleep researcher. So I know far too much about sleep and the consequences of sleep loss. I know that I'm depriving my son of the sleep he desperately needs as a rapidly growing teenager. I also know that by waking him up hours before his natural biological clock tells him he's ready, I'm literally robbing him of his dreams, the type of sleep most associated with learning, memory consolidation, and emotional processing. But it's not just my kid that's getting deprived of sleep. Sleep deprivation among American teenagers is an epidemic. Only about one in ten gets the eight to ten hours of sleep per night recommended by sleep scientists and pediatricians. Now, if you're thinking to yourself, phew, we're doing good, my kid's getting eight hours, remember, eight hours is the minimum recommendation. You're barely passing. Eight hours is kinda like getting a C on your report card. There are many factors contributing to this epidemic, but a major factor preventing teens from getting the sleep they need is actually a matter of public policy, not hormones, social lives, or Snapchat. Across the country, many schools are starting around seven-thirty a.m. or earlier, despite the fact that major medical organizations recommend that middle and high schools start no earlier than eight-thirty a.m. These early start policies have a direct effect on how much, or really, how little, sleep American teenagers are getting. They're also pitting teenagers and their parents in a fundamentally unwinnable fight against their own bodies. Around the time of puberty, teenagers experience a delay in the biological clock, which determines when we feel most awake and when we feel most sleepy. This is driven in part by a shift in the release of the hormone melatonin. Teenagers' bodies wait to start releasing melatonin until around eleven p.m., which is two hours later than what we see in adults or younger children. This means that waking a teenager up at six a.m. is the biological equivalent of waking an adult up at four a.m. Now, on the unfortunate days when I have to wake up at four a.m., I'm a zombie, functionally useless. I can't think straight, I'm irritable, and I probably shouldn't be driving a car. But this is how many American teenagers feel every single school day. In fact, many of the, shall we say, unpleasant characteristics that we chalk up to being a teenager, moodiness, irritability, laziness, depression, could be a product of chronic sleep deprivation. For many teens battling chronic sleep loss, their go-to strategy to compensate is consuming large quantities of caffeine in the form of baked frittinos or energy drinks and shots. So essentially, we've got an entire population of tired but wired youth. Advocates of sleep-friendly start times know that adolescence is a period of dramatic brain development, particularly in the parts of the brain that are responsible for those higher-order thinking processes, including reasoning, problem-solving, and good judgment. In other words, the very type of brain activity that's responsible for reining in those impulsive and often whiskey behaviors that are so characteristic of adolescence and that are so terrifying to us parents and teenagers. They know that, like the rest of us, when teenagers don't get the sleep they need, their brains, their bodies, and behaviors suffer with both immediate and lasting effects. They can't concentrate, their attention plummets, and many will even show behavioral signs that mimic ADHD. But the consequences of teen sleep loss go well beyond the classroom, saddeningly contributing to many of the mental health problems that skyrocket during adolescence, including substance use, depression, and suicide. In our work with teens from L.A. Unified School District, we found that teens with sleep problems were fifty-five percent more likely to have used alcohol in the past month. In another study with over thirty thousand high school students, they found that for each hour of lost sleep, there was a thirty-eight percent increase in feeling sad or hopeless and a fifty-eight percent increase in teen suicide attempts. And if that's not enough, teens who skip out on sleep are at increased risk for a host of physical health problems that plague our country, including obesity, heart disease, and diabetes. Then there's the risk of putting a sleep-deprived teen with a newly minted driver's license behind the wheel. Studies have shown that getting five hours or less of sleep per night is the equivalent of driving with a blood alcohol content above the legal limit. Advocates of sleep-friendly start times and researchers in this area have produced tremendous science showing the tremendous benefits of later start times. The findings are unequivocal, and as a sleep scientist, I rarely get to speak with that kind of certainty. Teens from districts with later start times get more sleep. To the naysayers who may think that if schools start later, teens will just stay up later, the truth is, their bedtimes stay the same, but their wake-up times get extended, resulting in more sleep. They're more likely to show up for school. School absences drop by twenty-five percent in one district, and they're less likely to drop out. Not surprisingly, they do better academically. So this has real implications for reducing the achievement gap. Standardized test scores in math and reading go up by two to three percentage points. That's as powerful as reducing class sizes by one-third fewer students or replacing a so-so teacher in the classroom with a truly outstanding one. Their mental and physical health improves, and even their families are happier. I mean, who wouldn't enjoy a little more pleasantness from our teens and a little less crankiness? Even their communities are safer because car crash rates go down, a seventy percent reduction in one district. Given these tremendous benefits, you might think, well, this is a no-brainer, right? So why have we, as a society, failed to heed this call? Often, we argue that against later start times goes something like this. Why should we delay start times for teenagers? We need to toughen them up so they're ready for the real world. But that's like saying to the parents of a two-year-old, don't let Johnny nap, or he won't be ready for kindergarten. Delaying start times also presents many logistical challenges, not just for students and their families, but for communities as a whole. Updating bus routes, increased transportation costs, impact on sports, care before or after school. These are the same concerns that come up in district after district time and again around the country as school start times are debated. And they're legitimate concerns, but these are problems we have to work through. They are not valid excuses for failing to do the right thing for our children, which is to start middle and high schools no earlier than eight-thirty a.m. And in districts around the country, big and small, who have made this change, they've found that these fears are often unfounded and far outweighed by the tremendous benefits for our student health and performance and our collective public safety. So tomorrow morning, when coincidentally, we get to set our clocks back by an hour, and you get that delicious extra hour of sleep, and the day seems a little longer and a little more full of hope. Think about the tremendous power of sleep, and think about what a gift it would be for our children to be able to wake up naturally in harmony with their own biology. Thank you, and pleasant dreams.
So thank you for letting me present that. I think she summed it up much better than I could have and it coincides with where my passion comes from. And that was brief, that was about ten minutes long. There's a link at Judith Owens, which is an hour-long, which gives even more in-depth but a little brighter information. So thank you very much for letting me present that.
Thank you. Any feedback on that? Did everybody just say, yes, now I agree? I'll be ostrich. Please take that. I think your associate there had a comment.
Um, well, actually
Could we have your name and address, please?
Ellen Carpenter, two hundred North Main Street, Cohasset. May I actually speak to this issue?
Yes. You have three minutes, sorry.
I'm sorry?
You have three minutes.
Really? I have three minutes. So I, obviously, as a parent, you've already heard this woman, and perhaps some of you had the good fortune to actually hear Judith Owens, who is an international expert on sleep and particularly adolescent sleep. She spoke here in Cohasset a couple of weeks ago. I'm not sure how many of you have had the chance to listen to that. Please tune in and listen to that. She's an expert, we are not, we're parents. And I think I understand that somebody recently told me that the high schoolers were surveyed about this particular question. While I'm all in favor of hearing the high schoolers' opinion on this, I don't think we go to high schoolers to ask them what is good for their health. They're not necessarily the best judgment of that, and we don't set the curriculum based on what high schoolers believe. But I'd just like to say something, quickly introduce myself. I've been living in Cohasset for four years. My husband and I moved here from Australia four years ago. I'm a journalist and writer. I have worked for newspapers, editors. I have edited and reported for newspapers, magazines, television, radio shows, and I have researched this subject thoroughly over the last two years. I've met with the superintendent on a number of occasions. I've done so because I have deep and significant concerns about this issue as I know other parents in this town also have. I'm the parent of a thirteen-year-old seventh grader in Cohasset. She's an excellent student, she's motivated, she works hard, and she's on the high honors list. And she does a number of extracurricular activities which make her happy. But she's also chronically sleep-deprived, and she's increasingly so. She turned thirteen this year, and her circadian rhythm is changing and has changed. And I've noticed a big change in the last year, and I will continue to notice that in the coming year. How do I know she's sleep-deprived? Because every day, my daughter struggles to get up for school. Every day, she complains to me about how tired she is. As the school week progresses, she becomes a little grumpier, a little less patient, a little more likely to overreact to small things, a little less able to learn well or make good decisions, a little less happy, a little more anxious and stressed, a little less able to cope with life as a teenager. You know what it's like when you're sleep-deprived. You know what it's like when you've been up late or you've woken in the middle of the night and you couldn't get back to sleep and you had to get up. You know what that's like, to get up and try to function. You know how hard it is to think straight, to take in new information, to work effectively, to drive safely, to be patient with your family or your colleagues, to make healthy food choices, to make good decisions about how you spend your time. You all know what that's like. But for our teens, it's even harder. I'm sure many of you know the research already. I know, Larissa Moss, you certainly do, I know that you do. And we've just heard the presentation, which has presented the information pretty well. Our teens find it even harder because their brains are developing at a rate faster than any other time in their lives since they were born. And their brains are undergoing crucial changes that during adolescence, without enough sleep, that development is compromised. Their health now and in their future is compromised. Is my child using devices in her room at night, you might wonder? No, she doesn't have any devices. There's no television, no iPod, no phone in her room. She plays no video games or a screen-free family during the week. She's in bed by nine every night. But I've noticed something about her. She's finding it harder to fall asleep at night than she used to. She doesn't wake up as easily as she used to because her biological rhythm, her natural rhythm, is changing. It happens to all teenagers. It's shifting, and it's going to shift more. And I'm worried that as it does so, I'm worried about how she's going to cope when she can't fall asleep until eleven o'clock at night, as I know many teenagers cannot. And she still has to get up at six or six-thirty in the morning to go to school the next day. What impact is that going to have on her health, her physical, her mental health, on her mood, her academic outcomes, and our family? Every day, I have to wake her up from deep sleep, the deep sleep that enriches her brain, that is essential for her development. And every day that that happens, I'm putting her health at risk. And how does that make me feel as a parent in Cohasset? It makes me feel like I'm not a good parent, that's how it makes me feel. I'm knowingly putting my child at a significantly increased risk of anxiety, depression, self-harm, suicide, obesity, diabetes, heart disease, sports injuries, risk-taking behaviors, bicycle accidents in the future, car accidents when she's driving, just by setting her to school too early. And I will sum up, I understand that time is a bit and I know this because the experts have been telling us for years. They've been telling us for many years. Four years ago, the American Pediatric Association recommended later start times no later than eight-thirty in two thousand and fourteen. A year later, the Center for Disease Control made the same recommendation. The American Medical Association made the same recommendation the following year. And last year, the American Academy of Sleep Medicine made a position statement that schools should not begin any earlier than eight-thirty for middle and high school students. Why have they all made these recommendations? Why are these experts telling us this? For the reasons you've already heard tonight. Because an early school start time for our teenagers is a danger to their health, just as bullying and drug abuse and smoke inhalation, all these things which we do not ignore, which we have addressed and address all the time. Will it be hard to make a change for a later school start time in Cohasset? Yes. Will it impact bus schedules, board schedules, after-school jobs, childcare? Yes, it will impact all those things. Do we ignore things because they're hard to do when they're important? No, we don't. I don't think Americans do that. We owe it to the children of this town, all those children who attend now the middle high school and all those who will attend it in the future, not just to educate them, but to keep them safe. This isn't an issue about sport or buses or parent timetables. It's about one thing, it's about the health and well-being of our kids. If we care about it, we'll find a way through the obstacles. And I implore you, as the school committee, to do everything in your power to find the way. Thank you.
Yes. My name is Dina Omra, Nineteenth Ledger Farm Drive. So last year, I had kids, and we have five children. So last year, we had one child in Osgood, two in Deer Hill, and then two were in the middle school. And then I remember that children would wake up in this order. Osgood child first, Deer Hill kids second, and then the middle schoolers would wake up last. And I remember my middle schoolers would be so upset at the Deer Hill kids because why are you up? Because they're sleeper, like later, sleep-in. This year, both of my Deer Hill kids are now in middle school, and it's a challenge for them to wake up in the morning. Like, they have shifted. My son wakes up exhausted, tired, and unfortunately, all parents, maybe not only in Cohasset, generally speaking, want to have a picture-perfect of their family, and no one speaks up. But I think almost every household has a child, either that has anxieties, or has depression, or has any type of suicidal thoughts. And unfortunately, I was telling my daughter the other day, just like how homosexuals in the nineties, when we were growing up, they were living in shame, and they wouldn't come out of the closet. I think now, mental health students, people are living in that closet. Everyone has flips with the shame that I have depression or I have mental health issues. I have a child who has anxieties. I have a child who has depression. I have a child who has ADHD. And each one of them, sometimes I have to give them Tylenol PM to fall asleep at night. Melatonin is in my son's room as if it's M&amp;M's. And maybe you're gonna judge me as a parent, but that's the only way I can go so they can wake up in the morning. My daughter, who is in tenth grade, ninth grade, sorry, she's an ace, like four point two, her GPA is, she stays up late at night until twelve sometimes or one in the morning so she can do her best. She's a perfectionist, and that's, she has a certain standard for herself. My other son, sometimes he's up until twelve a.m. He shouldn't be waking up at six in the morning. And I think whoever is against this, whatever that child is gonna do in the afternoon, they can wake up earlier and do it in the morning. I totally second what they said, what she said, sorry. And I think for our own kids' mental health, yes, this wasn't our case, I used to wake up at six in the morning. I don't know what happened for this generation, but we have to accept that there's something different about this generation. And instead of us being nostalgic to how things were when we were growing up, we need to face what's going on. But the anxieties and the depression and all these suicidal thoughts, I hear them from many parents. They don't speak up because they don't wanna admit it, but there are a lot going on. And if we can take one measure, that, I mean, there's no harm done in us starting late. It's better taking all the precautions than for something, God forbid, happens to one of our children, and then we're faced up, we should have done that. But I think this is a no-brainer. There are a lot of towns who start with this. And I think, I mean, why shouldn't we? So, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody could, yes?
Hi, my name is Mohammed Omra, I'm also on Nineteenth Ledger Farm Drive. So the angle, so just kind of reiterate one last thing before I move on to my main point, which is that it was amazing how, when I used to tuck in the now twelve-year-olds, like a couple of years ago, eight-thirty, I checked up on them, nine-fifteen, they're gone. And now, like, you know, like, you know, later, whoa, 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 like, why are you up at ten? I tuck her in, you know, and then, you know, she's I tuck her in, you know, and then, you know, it's just like the lights on, show like what's going on. And it's like that, that, you know, that clock, it's, it's, it's a true thing. I mean, like, it's like, I mean, you know, and, you know, I'm sure a lot, a lot of folks have seen the same thing. But it does, it happens in snap of a finger. I was like the age of twelve or thirteen, just something happens. But like the angle I kind of want to also approach is like from a, from a return investment angle. So like, you know, we, we, you know, like, you guys work hard and you kind of find ways to like, uh, to like, to, to, to make the school system better, to kind of make, uh, get results better from the students. You know, all these things, you know, how can we, how can we kind of maximize the class size? How can we do all these things that change our curriculum? Uh, and like here's scientific evidence that shows that, you know, give these guys one extra hour of sleep, you increase math scores and science scores by two, three points. You know, these are things that are like, you know, if you were to try to do it by decreasing class sizes, making a different environment, it would cost so much more, you know? And this is one, uh, it's possible this thing will cost something. But it's, it seems like more of a lot of reshuffling, a lot of people are gonna be inconvenienced. But it's, there's no monetary cost to it. There's no going to Town Hall and saying, I need like extra a million dollars for this. It's really just kind of like, you know, folks saying, you know what, uh, you know, taking a, like a leap of faith and hoping that the science work. And, and, you know, if it's working like large districts like Los Angeles, there's no reason to work in a district like this as well, you know? So I, I mean, I would have you guys consider it for a return investment point of view as well.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Okay. I do want to say that the survey of the high school students and there were two hundred and fifty-eight students who responded. Uh, for the eight-thirty, which is what is advocated to three-twenty, there were fewer than twenty-eight percent who were in favor. And they had some serious concerns. And as you know, we talked about this, it was in two thousand and five when it was somewhat later and we had a revolt. So, um, there's education to be done and that's what we talked about. So that's really where we need to be at this point and that's, you know.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. And the, I, I liked, I thought that was very clever, Ellen, um, to say that, that, um, asking, well, I want to respect the kids as, uh, my daughter would have a donut for dinner if I let her. So I wouldn't, I'd, I'd go to my better judgment rather than, and I'm not, and, you know, I'm not offending the high schoolers, I think they're brilliant, wonderful, fabulous. But I think, um, doctors, therapists, parents.
Well, I think a survey of the...
Stealing the idea.
I think for today that it's almost impossible to get an appointment with a therapist in this area because they are so busy with teenagers. Teenagers are filling up all the slots. And, um, and I would say that rather than surveying the high school students, perhaps surveying the therapists in this area would be...
Oh, interesting, okay.
I can't even survey.
We're gonna, what?
I was like, you probably can't even survey them because they probably took...
Yeah, they was, yeah, they won't get from the top of the...
I'm sorry, just a snarky comment there, but it's everywhere in the country.
All right. Um, we, we really need to wrap up this conversation. Um, if you have a new, something new to add, fine. But if you're just giving support to what's already been said, I'm going to say no.
I'm just going to comment along the question of surveying the high school students.
Okay, we've covered that. We've, yeah, it's already been covered.
Can I s-?
Okay, yes.
Can I say something? Um, Ellen and I had the pleasure of going to that speech. What was her name? I'm sorry, I forgot.
Judith Owen.
More, oh, Judith Owen.
Judith Owen speech. And we asked the teenager in the room, and maybe we can ask this teenager, what did, what he thinks?
Jack.
I don't think Charlie wants to be put on this phone.
That's Jack.
Well, and we did, uh, we did that there and the kid said he fell asleep during class all the time.
Yeah, my kid fell asleep.
So, I mean, we surveyed one kid in the room and we were all there and that's what he said, correct?
Okay, one teenager who was surveyed that.
The only teenager in the room.
Barb. Um, I, I, I think that's a lot of great information that's come out. I think I actually have, um, I asked the person that had to the start change time in Duxbury for a lot of their data and a lot of it matched what Dr. Owen said. Some of it was actually different. So I guess my point is sort of, I'm interested in, I think the best way to do this is do it thoroughly and have a process. I mean, we can talk about surveying again, we can talk about, but I think what really needs to be designed is a thorough, comprehensive process. Because I think another problem is, okay, we go and make the decision and people are like, well, hold on a second, you didn't, you didn't vet this properly? Um, so I just, I think...
Well, not again, not again. Nobody's suggesting that you do that. Nobody's suggesting you make a decision without vetting it.
No, 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 no. So I just wanted to make that clear, I mean...
I don't think anyone expects you to make a decision without, um, an education and a, and a, some sort of a public campaign, if you like.
Yeah, no, I just, I mean, I...
I think that would be a bad idea.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, like, a lot of what you're saying, I lived the same thi- I lived it as a student and I live it as a parent, so, um, but I think sitting here making a decision for a district, I'm not gonna do just what I wanna do for my kid and what works for me.
Well, no decisions are gonna be made anyway.
Right, so the point is, I think we're in a good spot to try to figure out...
To continue the...
To design a process to...
The conversation.
Just inter- this was going to be an update and I think a discussion would be a different time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Just because the agenda's so, so...
Yes.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The handbook and the improvement plan is on deck.
Okay.
So, um, folks who have had the pleasure of, this is just the high school handbook at this town. Folks who've had the pleasure of the high school handbook in the past. Well, notice that we did a bit of a reorg. Um, and rewrote a couple of sections. And this was the product of really the faculty, the, our school leadership team, all year long making notes and giving feedback on areas that we just felt needed to be strengthened. So unlike in previous years, I didn't prepare an executive summary that compared page twelve to page thirteen. So I kept everything highlighted that was new. And I think probably easier for me to just ask if there are any questions or particular sections you would like a rationale for.
Thank you.
Or that you would like a discussion of. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Ellen, do you have a question?
I have a couple.
Okay.
Do you wanna go one by one or you want me to go ahead? Well, first of all, thank you. I loved the reorganization. I thought pulling together certain sections that were separated and not sectioned was great. It was very clear where everything was. Thank you for the yellow highlights. I minimized my flipping from last year's to this. Um, so I'm just gonna go by page, if that's okay? Page seventeen, write a question under parent, caregiver involvement. The whole paragraph is new. They used to reflect education regarding human sexuality and parents opting out. Is that not something we need to do or is that in another section that I missed?
Um, there, there, that section doesn't, doesn't have to go there. It's under the health section.
Okay.
We can, we can put it there. But the, but the language behind it, can I be honest, was twenty years old.
Yeah.
And that isn't, um, our students have that, that right to opt out. A letter goes home from a health teacher every year. And so we don't have to duplicate it in the handbook. And yes, I think it also is in the district level handbook.
Okay.
So some of the stuff that I pulled out of this was because I was in the district level handbook that was new last year. And maybe had, um, since they were produced at the same time last year, it just hadn't been pulled out in time.
Okay.
For example, the restraint policy and things like that. Everything at the district level that would cover all students in Cohasset, I pulled up.
Okay, great. Um, I was gonna ask Dr. GPA, but I saw that in the school improvement plan, so we'll wait on that one. I love this, uh, student parking. I just saw on page twenty-five, I had a, I had just had a, a thought.
Sure.
Up to you or not. And, you know, we've put in the new sign at the end of this driveway, no right turn from two to two-twenty, I believe. I don't know if you'd wanna put that in this section so that parents are also aware that they, I, but up to you. I, I don't know if it's something that you can't enforce or...
It's a police issue, it's not a school matter, that's the issue.
Okay, sorry.
The sign is really a, a, a police matter, a DPW matter.
Oh, and would students register their cars?
Yeah.
There's a series of bullets that say by signing below you are agreeing to abide by.
Yeah.
I think that would be a fine place to add the bullet.
Okay.
You acknowledge, you know, the turn left.
And maybe, I have to say that I'm, quite often I plan my time here poorly. For some reason, I seem to be here at one and leaving right when, at dismissal time. And it's never a good thing, but I've been seeing students turn right out of the driveway. And I understand that without a police officer there, it's difficult to enforce that. Um, but maybe just future thought in the, um, the hand, the newsletters that go home, if you could reiterate that next year, that no one is to turn right out of the driveway at dismissal time. If you just remind them over and over again, maybe the parents will start saying, hey, did you know? Because it's, Pond Street's dangerous, let's say, we all know it.
Well, the new drivers would probably just get trained anyways.
Right.
It's probably the older kids who've been driving for a few years that are so accustomed to turning right.
I mean, we're looking for some low-level improvements to start. And right now, and now right now would be that song, "Stop Beeping Horns." That's, that's a legitimate irritation on a daily basis.
Oh, man.
So I appreciate all of that. And I think that, um, it would be a wonderful use potentially of a school resource officer next year to have during utility period, you know, a new, a new driver training information session. They can ask him questions, he can go over the basics of what it means to function. But certainly, when they register for their parking spaces, we make sure that they understand this is what you're saying, yes, true.
Okay.
Because it is a privilege, many districts charge.
Page twenty-seven, under the level-one offense, and just a thought. So what's new in all three levels of offenses is removal from leadership positions. And all of the other possible consequences kind of escalate on top of each other, you know? Level-two consequences escalate on top of level-one and level-three on top of level-two. Would you think about or consider, instead of removal, maybe suspension for a level-one?
Just a, it, it, we're such a small school to suspend and then what, somebody else has to do the job? So I would think that any student, and it's just a possible consequence, and I have it in every category. So that, because if it was only in one or the other, somebody would think it was some, a loophole. Um, we're, we're not always proud of people that have leadership roles in our school or on our teams.
Yeah.
And, and it, those are things that actually matter to kids. And so I think if we're looking for model students and people to uphold the highest standards of behavior, I think it sends a quite a message to the rest of the student body if you're allowed to retain or you just get, there, there isn't a kid in our building who would care if they got suspended from, except the captains that they would. If they were suspended from being class president for two weeks, it feels rather odd to say, okay, after that slap on the wrist, you would return. It would have to be fairly egregious. It would have to be, um, someone who was constantly kind of floating the system, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I, but I think that the general idea of disrespect, it's something that we, we could have done it anyway under social probation clause, it just wasn't outlined in there. And so I would want it outlined in there because of the fact that then if people can't claim they didn't know.
Yeah, I think the trick is that you want a lot of flexibility to understand circumstances and make decisions that are reasonable and not just say, this, this consequence applies to every offense. And then you get into listing, you know, every single thing, the problems that, that parents come back at you or students come back at you and say, well, it's not listed here. So you wanna find that good balance between using your judgment and being clear, you know?
Right, that's why I was like, just, just a thought, looking at it like a percent...
Yeah, because it's highlighted, it's jumping off the page.
Well, well, and it's, you can clearly see the number of consequences, you know, in, increased by level. And, and I think you're right, it's, you know, the athletic captains are the ones who would, you know, to them, I mean, they walk out at the beginning of the game and, and it's noticeable when they're not participating in their duties. So, um, okay, no problem. Um, I don't just go, I wrote, I love all the new sections, so I won't bore you to go all the way. Um, page fifty? The co-curricular participation? It's all, um, awesome. I think it's much clearer than before. On page fifty-four, I think you just need to add a couple of teens. In spring, girls golf.
Um, yep, that, we have, I have, here are notes upstairs. This was something that was taken from the, um...
From the, the last one?
From, that section was taken, some of the information was taken from the latest MIA handbook and our old one, yes.
Okay.
So, yep.
Yes, I, girls golf and sailing in the spring and golf in the fall is boys. I don't know if that matters or not. The, um, under eligibility, we have an eighth-grade participation policy. And I don't know if you put that in the middle school handbook or in the high school handbook.
What page do you want?
Well, on fifty-four, I'm just looking at eligibility. You have, you know, a sort of things and I'm just asking the question about eighth-grade eligibility.
So that's, um, as a league, we make a decision whether, you know, to allow eighth graders to play if they have a shared principal without applying for a waiver. And so I think that because it's on a, yeah, a case-by-case basis, I think that is actually in the middle school handbook.
In the middle school handbook, okay.
And it's in, Brian points out, it's listed in number two.
In number two.
Number two, okay.
Middle school students being eligible for high school.
Oh, yeah, middle school students eligible, yeah.
So sorry.
But there is particular language around how an eighth grader maintains eligibility in the middle school handbook as well.
Yeah, okay, so sorry. And my final comment on page fifty-six on the home educated students, and this is more for the committee. Um, if we look at number one, um, if, if the local school committee of an MIA public school member institution has adopted the policy regarding participation of home educated students on the high school team. I don't believe we have one. I looked in section JJ, it was JJ ID.
That was one of my questions.
Oh, sorry, Barb.
The policy stuff.
Okay.
It was good, though. Yeah, I was gonna, I did not look, but it was a, something to follow up on because I wasn't, I don't remember seeing.
Yeah, yeah, we just have JJ ID.
I don't think we had one either.
So we can put that on our follow-up list.
Awesome.
And I could take that out except for I think it's a question that's not...
No, 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 no. We need to do our job and make sure we have a policy.
I agree.
Yep.
I do want to add one thing. All titles are now going to be in family handbook rather than parent.
Right.
So, just being politically correct.
Um, I'm done, sorry to hide that. I, I just had, mine was just the policy thing I was gonna, that was for us to figure out because I think it should be in here. Then I just have one stop, kind of stupid type of thing.
Oh, sure.
Um, page twenty-eight, your major offenses, J U L.
Oh, yeah, it's got two, two U's and no E, right?
J U L L, J U U L, just for your credibility with the kids, you know?
Little train.
Oh, we know what it was.
Isn't it sad that we know how to spell that?
Yeah. Won't ask why.
Is that a brand name?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
It's like Kleenex, it's turned, it's turned, Kleenex kind of deals.
Any other comments?
I loved the new section on the sports and the, I, I think it's just very clear. And it's, I think it's great.
Thanks.
I also really like the way that you highlighted everything so that it was easy for us to figure it out. Thank you very much because as Ellen says...
We can make that the new plan.
Limping back and forth is just a pain in the neck.
That was so good, now we want the improvement plan.
No, I did honestly, I did go back and like, okay, well, what did it used to say?
And a lot of it was just moving some chunks to other places because it, you know?
Because it makes more sense that way.
Nicely done.
No, that's great, thanks, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
So the, the, um, the open school improvement plan for next year will be somewhat anti-clanactic since a good giant chunk of it is the middle school action plan. I'm very fond of that. Um, as you can see, I, I started us first off by giving a year in review for our last school improvement plan. And obviously, we've done with Patrick and Louise has supported tremendous amount of social, emotional learning and professional development this year. Um, two, goals two and four are continued as they were always planned to be. They were always planned to be goals that went through seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen-nineteen. So our goal about improving the middle school culture in response to all of the NELLS reporting, you can see that that is noted as being implemented as part of our new school improvement plan. Implementation of BYOD, you know, thanks to everybody in the world, that's gone remarkably without incident.
Has it, I'm sorry, can I...
I think the most confusing thing with BOD this year and really just our teachers' adaptation to it because they weren't responsible for the implementation. But, I mean, the most complicated thing is, has been figuring out where people are gonna turn and let up. Better bar, truly. I think the teachers have done, it's such an amazing job. Sure, there's a digital learning team, um, yes, there's support from the district level and we have sous-ski room, we have IT. But just the, the adaptability of, um, teachers working with students to recognize how useful it is, when it is useful, when it is appropriate, not feeling married to it, but also not being afraid, I think it's really gone marvelously. And we, and this was, and we, you know, Ellen knows because we were having those conversations together I think it's really gone marvelously. And we, and this was, and we, you know, Ellen knows because we were having those conversations together for the past few years. We explicitly made that a part of the school improvement plan last year because it was such a trepidation. So it's really something, isn't it?
Right. And so I was gonna ask you, Carolyn, and off the top of your head, I think we started the year at about eighty-four percent of the kids are bringing in their own devices. Did that sustain itself throughout the course of the year?
Absolutely. Yeah, very few, very few, little need to borrow the Chromebooks in the classroom, really it's a dead battery issue. Very occasionally it's something that's, you know, I forgot or I, it's up for repair. I haven't had a single teacher ask either of us this year to have a conversation with a student who really needs to be reminded.
We actually have an entire set sitting in the library still for borrow. It's always available. We have fewer going out on permit borrow than we anticipated because it's been very interesting.
Maybe for the next capital budget cycle, we should, we look at the, I know, I know we redeployed the inventory for borrowing, you know, on a school year basis and redeployed them into the classrooms, but maybe we ought to look at the whole model for capital budgets, the whole total number.
I think that's a conversation with leadership as to where we are and how they are. Especially now that we're collecting them. The end of the year staff passes in their laptop and we reframe and we start looking at the condition and what we're doing. So it'll be a conversation.
We're also carrying over the goal number four, which is to continue our work in UDL because teachers are very invested in that work and it's part of our strategic plan and just, we had always planned for it to be a two-year process. So that is the year in review for this last year and then I have our core values and beliefs. And then our first goal is to examine, for the high school, is to examine the GPA calculation for high school report cards and transcripts. It has come up at least once or twice a year in teacher conversation for the past six years. It was a real hot button issue years ago and the looks on the faces of high school teachers when I proposed that we reexamine it. And it was just a couple of years ago that I started to ask questions around how it had ever been arrived at. Here's still a lot of residual concern. They just remember that the fur flew at faculty meetings for months. And so, but, you know, it's time, it's time anyway because it's probably been ten years. So of course we want to reexamine our practices. Particularly, you know, I think there was a design of the Cohasset GPA and its current structure that was, let me see if I say this right, that was designed to demonstrate to the world that we hold kids to such a high standard that to be a Cohasset high school graduate is something special. And we love that, except for if now we are at a place where it's actually going to put a student at a disadvantage. Well, that's never been the intent. So I know that Barbara Steffen, you know, spoke to it a little bit at one of our meetings a few months ago. I know that it came up. Ellen has had conversations with people and I've received several emails from parents, so the time is now. So I've appointed Laura Struziary to chair the committee. There'll be an opportunity for a parent or two to assist the faculty members. Obviously Brian and I will be a part of it and will bring some, hopefully some changes, some recommendations or findings back to school committee during the school year. So that's one. Number two is to continue using our strategic plan as guidance in the effort to embed UDL into the curriculum. So we've done, we've made some progress with that. It's definitely something that teachers want more understanding of and more modeling of. And so we've done a good job of having people share best practices when they, and do it as a group in some of our PD days that has eased a lot of the tension or confusion or maybe consternation around, am I doing it right? And so we're committed as a school and as a district to having everything be universally designed. And so we didn't want to truncate that. We want to continue that goal. And I very much hope that my teachers' student learning goals next year will be focused on, many of them will be focused on that. On making sure that we are truly living the UDL thing. And that you can see is forecast for the next three years because that, like any part of the curriculum, is ongoing. And then the rest of the plan really will be, will be the action plan for the middle school that you have already had the pleasure of.
Thank you so much.
Nicely done.
Thanks, everybody.
I can give you the spelling because it's a proper name.
Thank you.
Okay, have a great night, folks.
Thank you. I'd like to make a recommendation at this point to move the Cohasset Project-Based Learning Summit above the temperature update. Just to get Mr. Buckley home so his keter rhythms aren't destroyed. So if that's okay.
Yes, fine.
Okay, Mr. Buckley, you're on.
All right, thanks very much.
We created a partnership that we're very excited about, so.
Do you want this to be thirty minutes or forty-five?
How about two and a half hours? I know you could go for that long, Jack.
This is the mouse? Can I have it there? Let me see here. Okay, there we go. Over backwards and that's all. Only the best, do you, Jack?
Ah, thanks, nice. Thank you for this opportunity and thank you, Louise and Carolyn. Patrick, I've been working, and Brian as well, and I've been working closely with Patrick on this grant. So I put together a presentation, hopefully so I could be coherent and so I could get you a little bit excited. So what I'm going to share with you is written right there. I'll talk about the grant. Two simple but provocative questions. By that I mean they're thought-provoking and three things I believe and a little bit of history. So this presentation is about a grant that we have, we being Cohasset Public Schools and Cohasset Center for Student Coastal Learning, excuse me, Coastal Research to do project-based learning. So we have a summit planned for July twenty-sixth and you are all invited. I certainly hope that you all plan on attending. It'll be a fun day and it's going to do a deep dive on project-based learning and community partnerships. And it's, the grant comes from funding by a group called Mass Ideas. And Mass Ideas gets their funding, there's a hyperlink here.
Mass Ideas is offered through the State Department as well, so it has federal granting and state granting. And it's to be innovative ideas for educating differently. Am I right? Am I getting that correctly?
Yeah, yeah. And I'm giving you a couple of sticky notes just to do a little bit of the teacher's. And also it's something that, do you want to play?
Sure.
I have pens and pencils in my bag. Where's Laura's? Okay, all right. Tracy, do you want to play too?
I've got, I've got a hundred.
So I thought I'd play this video. The Next Generation Learning Challenge is one of the groups that Mass Ideas is affiliated with. And the purpose of playing this video is that this grant came about from a workshop that Doc T, Patty McGrail, myself, and Susan Bryant, who lives in Cohasset and works with me at CLCR, the four of us attend. And this is a little video similar to some of the videos that we watched at the workshop. And we were asked to do lots of things with sticky notes. So we'll watch a couple minutes and if there's something you like, take a note, put a little note on something you like and something you wonder. And hopefully that'll play. I won't play the whole thing, though. I'm gonna just fast forward that just a tiny bit. So just in the interest of time, I'll just stop it there. We're almost at the end anyway, so we'll continue with, I'll continue with the presentation. But now would be the time in which you write something on a sticky note, something that you might have liked from that video presentation and something that it made you wonder about. And the reason why I'm asking you to do that is that was the kind of, that was similar to activities that we participated in, in the workshop. And we, of course, we could, oh, I have this habit, Patrick, of not using the, I got the fancy advanced. So back to the activity that I just asked you to do. Of course, we could discuss those and by all means, at the end, if there's something that you'd like to say about that. But in respect for your time, I'll just move on to talking a little bit about the workshop. So there are the four participants, school committee members and administrators, obviously are familiar with Patty and me and that's Susan Bryant. And that was our team. So you can see all those sticky notes there. And what they asked us to do is think about the design process. So the workshop was based on Stanford D-School Design and I'm sure that you're familiar with all of that. And what they made us do is come up with our big, big idea. Like what is your big idea, the four of you, what are you after? And there was our aspirational statement there is that we were going to have experiential project-based learning for everybody. K-12, even beyond the Cohasset district. And that the, ironically about GPA, we were going to abolish the GPA and.
Well, that was a quick study.
And replace it with a more authentic narrative assessment. And that students, that the focus would be on students thriving by really diving into the local community in order to better understand the global community. So they say, okay, great, those are your big ideas. What is your prototype? And so, you know, there's a big poster that we had there and one of the things that we said is that we wanted to get buy-in from the school administrators for project-based learning. And that's where the summit was conceived, that we would have the July twenty-sixth. We didn't know the date at that time, of course, but that was the birth, the conception there of, let's have a big summit in which we get teachers, administrators, community leaders all together and we really focus on project-based learning. And so obviously there's one of our sticky note sessions there, slapping things up on the wall. And as it's, as you can read there, we were really excited about bringing this back to share with the community and really focusing on developing in students a sense of place. And because Cohasset is beautiful and there's so many different ways in which you can access the beauty of Cohasset and get a sense of place, there's so many ways in which you can connect it in interdisciplinary ways. That was the idea about students being grounded in nature. And it really does fit in, as I'll say later, with some of the concepts of social emotional learning and even sort of some of that take a deep breath kinds of things and get outside and, not relax and have fun and goof off because there's learning to do, but get outside, relax, and let's have a little bit of a different type of learning. So we have planned, as I've said, July twenty-sixth, we have the lighthouse keepers secured for the day. And we're going to, we have right now seventeen teachers who have signed up. I have six or seven, I think, confirmations from administrators. We hope that there'll be school, if you haven't given your definitive RSVP, note to self, please do. And school committee members, obviously, you're invited to it as well. And we're going to engage in project-based learning and we're going to try to practice in the short time that we'll have and to compress into the short time we have all of these elements of project-based learning. But in red at the bottom, really the highlight, and one of the main goals is to really focus on school-community partnerships. And in forming this, we had to think about what are the questions that we want to answer? And, I think I need the mouse or not, where's the clicker? What's that?
I noticed, you have to click them two times each, I just.
Oh, okay. All right, so these are the questions that we crafted. And the reason why I put circles there is it's too wordy. So we're trying to build new relationships. We're trying to identify community stakeholders. And obviously we can all think of a dozen community stakeholders right off the top of our heads. We want to think about integrating project-based learning or raise the question, does project-based learning offer a way to address goals in social emotional learning? And will this inspire teachers and community stakeholders to improve project-based learning practices? So that's what we're after on the day, the new relationships, the community, relationships with community stakeholders and thinking about ways in which these relationships and activities, project-based learning activities that have, just quickly go back to, you know, these elements. And the only reason why I went back to these is that if you think about challenging questions that have an authentic component to them based in the community, that involves sustained inquiry. That's where the academic heart content comes into play where it's no longer about fluff and it's not just a project, it's something about, that involves sustained inquiry with a challenging question and reflection, critique, et cetera. And an excerpt from the strategic plan highlights that Cohasset Public Schools seeks to build communication and collaboration with community stakeholders and develop community partnerships that enhance opportunities for student learning. So the Project-Based Learning Summit, we think, is a great opportunity to dive into thinking about ways in which this will address some of the goals that authors, I don't know who is seated here, who are authors of that original, on the commit, school committee side, were authors of the original strategic plan along with administrators. But, you know, that would be one of the questions that we're posing. So two simple questions came from the workshop. We were given, prior to attending this workshop, which was in Springfield in March, we had to do for a homework assignment randomly pick. It didn't matter who you picked. It could be your grandmother, it could be a student, it could be your neighbor, it didn't matter. Just engage people in this conversation. What's great about school? And it was vague and open-ended. It could be school in general or it could be a specific school that the interviewee wanted to talk about. And what would you like to see in schools that doesn't currently happen? And I would definitely encourage you to have that conversation and ask people that because I was amazed that in spite of the variety of answers that you get, that people hone in on two common themes. The great part about school, people love the socialization, they love the, and they talk about either friends and just being together with friends, or they'll put it in the words of the civic mission of a school engage, helping to form the next generation of citizens. So people talk about socialization. What's great about schools? It's a great vehicle for meeting everybody's socialization skills, whether it's looked at at the micro level of a person gaining friends or the societal level of the school creating citizens. And then obviously you get a variety of different answers about what people think. You know, some people would say, hey, they start too early to meet, you know, like that other conversation. That's not, you know, so whatever an individual might choose to have. so whatever an individual might choose to have at the top of his or her list. But people talk a lot, at least in my experience, this was a survey that I did, I got sixty-seven people to answer and spit it out on LinkedIn and obviously I'm an ineffective user of social media because I only got sixty-seven people. And I put it on LinkedIn and I put it on Twitter and I sent it out on emails and I sent it to colleagues in school. And I had to do the conversion between taking people's answers and trying to categorize it. But out of sixty-seven people, they said something about project-based learning. And they wanted to get rid of bad teachers, that was union reform. That's what that one was. And so, based on what people said, that's what I found. And you can see that, you know, somebody else's agenda is language immersion, that what's not happening in school is language immersion at kindergarten. So obviously, when you, it depends on who you're asking, who's answering that question, what kind of answer you get. And those are my, that, you know, that's my data, but as I said, I would encourage you to have those, ask people those two simple questions, what's great about schools and what's currently not happening in schools that you'd like to see. It's phenomenal what people say, I've really, really enjoyed asking those two questions. And they are provocative because they provoke thought. I just wanted to show, if you want me to be done, I can be done, in the interest of time and your agenda, there's just a couple of videos that are here in which there are examples of students engaged in project-based learning. They do take place mostly around CSCR, but it doesn't necessarily have to be about CSCR.
Jack, how many are there?
I can play a minute, I think there's probably three and I can play a minute of each one.
We have a minute of one.
A minute of one, sure, we'll go with it.
We just have a long agenda.
We'll go with the, let's see, we'll go with the young students, because Andrew Thompson is awesome. And, oh, and you'll, hopefully it'll load.
Hello Pam, what do you see?
Oh, what's that?
How about that, Jack?
Says in the corner.
All right, so we're gonna go to Jack, there was Jack's intro and Andrew begins at six minutes. Just goodbye, there he is.
We did a lot of stuff here with a transect, so we started at the pipe and we went up all the way to that oak tree. So on the way, closer to the water, we have Spartina altamiflora, which is more of a wet plant and it helps when the tide rises and it also collects debris and stuff, so we can go pick it up later. And so behind now we have Spartina peatens, which is a little bit of a drier plant, but it still grows out of the marsh. And so everything here grows on peat, peat is a spongy-like material and is made up of dead, decomposing plants and angels.
Yeah, sometimes if you like found a big spot of mud and you bounced on it, it would be like really spongy and with like a little bit of water, like spunk if you squeezed it.
We brought granite transect, which is pretty much a really long measuring tape and we recorded what we saw and what we could find from one meter to two meters, two meters to three meters and so on and so forth. So back in the farthest area, we have fragmites, which is another kind of plant. So they're closer to the shore, so they like to be less wet, but they are definitely a basic species, so they can take over marshes.
So it sucks up a lot of the water, so it doesn't like, it's not like big.
All right, so there's one minute. And Why am I incompetent? Don't answer that.
I do want to say that the elementary schools have done some project-based learning units, particularly in science with Sarah Shannon last year and Jennifer Love has done some of that this year. So it's happening, it's growing into many of the areas. This takes us outdoors.
Ah, there we go. So, actually, I'll steal thirty seconds, that one's a long line. Here's, this literally is thirty seconds.
Hey, here we are, another Sunday afternoon at CSCR with Allison left and April on the right. How's it going ladies?
We are measuring the amount of progressive preaters in different samples of sewage with like different percent of sewage in the water to see how it compares to the amount of preaters that we have in our dirty water. So far, it's pretty high. Yeah.
Yeah, frightening. So, that is about it, actually, I'll skip that and I'll just blow through this really quickly. I put that up there because I wanted to stress the public part, that's the, obviously, the connection to community partners. Education 365, year-round, obviously, no student or teacher or administrator wants to be teaching three hundred and sixty-five years, days a year, but it's a concept of partnering with community stakeholders and figuring out ways in which, the third one, you can redesign education. And so, the quick history is, there I am when I had a mustache, back in nineteen ninety-nine, and that's Dave Magnusson, the longtime Science Department Chairman, and that was Rick, I forgot his last name, who, excuse me, who ran the workshop there. But way back in, you know, at the turn of the century, Y2K, we had an opportunity, some of the same people, Patty was with us back then, in which we were doing the same thing, using the outdoors as a classroom. And we created the Summer Institute, and it was the Summer Institute that then gave rise to the Center for Student Coastal Research. And so here we are, full circle, with a grant and an opportunity to dive back into project-based learning and support teachers and administrators and community partners to see what kind of harmony we can make together for the benefit of students.
Can I just say, I just want to thank Jack for this collaboration. The staff is extremely excited about it and it's gonna lead to a lot of great lesson development and also some great community partnerships, so we're really thrilled for it, so it should be a great day, very excited.
Thank you so much, Jeff.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And do you mind if I collect your sticky notes? That's all right.
I got a bunch on there.
I have a few. You can have mine if you guess what I wrote.
Let's see.
You're right, deeper richer competencies and thrive in the world.
Awesome.
Good guessing.
Jack, I have a question.
Sure.
Do you see this evolving, you talk about community-based partnerships and there are some natural connections in town. Do you see project-based learning with the community expanding beyond nature, for lack of a better word?
Definitely.
Like with engineers and architects and things like that?
We had that discussion, yes, very much so. We have an audience.
A hundred percent, the, a lot of it depends on building, as you know, relationships. And expert XYZ being plucked off the street and brought into a classroom doesn't necessarily go anywhere. Might be a nice, you know, there may or may not be synergy and it just, you know, sometimes it can be hit or miss. But I think that there's a lot of people out there in the community who are willing to partner, who do have expertise, who can offer a lot of things. And it's just a matter of sort of creating those networks and making people know who's available and introducing and creating the structures that support that kind of learning. But one of the things I left up in my classroom, I was just going through a bunch of files today and it was a page that I had copied out of Victor Bigelow's Narrative History in Cohasset. And it was a one-page thing about the Works Project Administration after the Depression and its infusion of money, and it was Cohasset's infusion of money to do a bunch of different projects. And it really just reminded me of infrastructure. And actually, one of the slides I went by was, if you look at all the flooding and you look at all the things that are going on and the engineering work that needs to take place in town with the planning, the planning board and the master plan.
Which is tonight.
Right, the master plan and the forum that just had on building community resiliency. So, there's no shortage of things, even though that's nature-related, you know, the engineering.
Jack, I could also just say, you know, the idea of authentic audience is a great way to not only infuse the community but to create, you know, project-based learning-like activities. And so, having these connections with people throughout the community to create authentic audiences for our students when they're creating their work is just, just as important as, you know, actually knowing the teachers, knowing how to design the products. So, about the process, so it's, that in itself is a worthwhile enterprise.
And part of that is also in the middle school plan, isn't it?
Yes, it is, absolutely.
I just wanted to say, as a parent, how tremendously excited I am about this. I see it as a tremendous opportunity for kids to be out in nature and doing real world and projects and research. And I, my kids haven't had extensive experience with CSCR, but the little bit that they have done, they have loved. And I just think it's tremendously exciting and I think it gives a kid a real chance to do real research. And I see great things coming about.
I just jumped in there, I'm sorry. I just wanted to point out, all those students, that's awesome, I love that picture there, community service students standing on top of the Beechwood Dam. And obviously, water tends to be, it's sort of water-centric, but it need not be. That's Scott Papa down on the bottom right who works for the wastewater treatment plant. And those who are my community service students, and I brought them to the wastewater treatment plant. And Owen Blaken said, that was one of the best trips I, he said, I didn't even know anything about this.
That should be a first degree trip, because it fits perfectly with their interests.
Even though telling your question about nature and water, it kind of seems like I'm there. I'm really talking about, you know, that's all about engineering.
Right.
And, you know, there's just a bazillion ways to, to care.
Thank you. Opportunities for our students, which is great. Thank you, Mr. Owen.
Yeah, just wanted to say one thing, like the project-based learning model is like pretty much Boy Scouts when you're kind of finishing up with it, you do the Eagle Scout project, kind of take the finish line. And one of the things that, you know, like one thing, you know, that maybe when this thing takes off that, you know, the Boy Scouts haven't been able to kind of really do as well, which is kind of reach out, like the Boy Scouts go out, try and figure out what project, you know, do I need to do? Sometimes you do a project that's nice, but that's not what the community needs. And like even that you guys are in touch, you know, with the town and, you know, with the schools and, you know, and with the students, you know, you guys probably are, you know, best, you can probably compare like prior list of things, projects that could be used for, you know, project-based learning and the event for the town at the same time. Maybe the Boy Scouts also steal it as well, you know, it's actually pretty cool things.
Maybe they'll do some better projects. Actually, we've had some pretty interesting projects here. Thank you.
Click a rocket.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Dan.
You're welcome, please.
The following item is an update. And it's going through the process, as you know, in order to finance big expensive pieces for the schools goes to the arduous attendance at Cap the Budget, followed by another arduous attendance at Advisory. And then ultimately, when we present to the selectmen in the town meeting, for anything over ten thousand dollars. So I thought I'd go through this and go through the process of what that would look like if we were to advocate for that. And I said initially, you know, we look at the temperatures at Deer Hill and I do want to explain those as well. And that, you know, if we go to any of the boards in town and ask for added money, we hear, why do you want it? If we say it's hot, they'll say, how hot? If we said very hot, they'd say, well, what's very hot? And they finally say, okay, I don't get it. They drive on data, so I tried to collect as much data as I could. And I collected this today, so I apologize, you can have it in your pocket, so that you can follow with me. What I did is, temperatures are typically taken with, at airports for National Underground, so that's where these were taken. What I did was follow the temperature gauges for September, May and June, the trend since FY15. So the fall of two thousand fourteen to June of two thousand fifteen and respectively to the two thousand eighteen that we're in. And the number of school days within that month, the X's are holidays or weekends, so they are not the days that we calculate. So if we look in two thousand fifteen, in September, we actually had two days that were eighty or hotter. And that May was a particularly warm month, we had nine of them. And then in June, there were zero, and the end and beginning are when we start school and end school. Two thousand sixteen, FY16, September, we started on the tenth and we had some hot days before that, but we weren't in school. September saw three and May saw just one and June saw three. It was a year that was particularly cool. In two thousand seventeen, which includes this data here, September had one day over eighty, May had two and June had eight. It was a particularly very warm month and an end to that school year. FY18 means our current year. We had four in September, five in May, and one of them was a half day. And in June, so far, we've had three, the beginning of the month was relatively cool. What happens with the temperatures in the various rooms was that we did, how we got these temperatures is the process that you have on the next page. The timeline was in two thousand sixteen when we met with Principal DiChiara. She said, our rooms are hot, we said, how hot? She said, very hot. And I said, what's very hot? She said, very, very hot. And so then we didn't have the data. And I said, I can't go to a town or to anyone and say, I need remediation when all I have is I'm sweating. So we asked for data and that's how this data was accumulated. But what we asked of her was, tell me the three hottest rooms in your building. And she identified one fifty-four, one fifty and one thirty-four. And you have a map of the building following that, and they're highlighted. So there were three, one is, and two of them are on either side of the courtyard and one of them, that one fifty-four is across from the cafeteria. The one fifty-four is where the hottest days appeared. So that, we are still collecting data to this point. We met with Brian Joyce and Mark Kelly and John and myself and school committee members. And we said, well, we can't just, they recommended air conditioners. And I said, well, okay, we can look at that, but without data, we don't go anywhere. And the feasibility of that kind of thing. So Mark went off and did explore that while we said we can have other options to explore. When he looked at the possibility of, Jennifer originally said she would like nine air conditioners. What we found when we moved, we had obligatory, for health reasons, installed an air, window air conditioner at the middle school. We found that we were in violation of the sealed building for safety for fire. So what has to happen is when the air conditioner is placed in a window, the rest of the window must be sealed and not with wood. It has to be a fireproof and it has to keep the integrity of the building. We're still in process of fixing that. What happens is we lose light and it is not only expensive, but the air is just, it would be a permanent fixture in it. The other thing that we found out when Mark started looking at those was the electrical outlet had to be short and it had to be dedicated to the one outlet had to be short, and it had to be dedicated to the one air, the one air conditioning plus the mechanics and all of that of placing it in. The expense was great, the electrical expense was great, but we're still gathering data. I met recently this spring about, with the union representative for wellness and the representative at Deerhill, and we talked about the rooms and how to deal with this season and how to deal going forward. And what we agreed as a group was that they would have a plan, and I met with the faculty as a whole at their faculty meeting and gave them our background and what we were looking for. Also asked if they needed fans, we would supply fans, and I did supply a couple. That there were areas within Deerhill that are air-conditioned. So, there is a classroom, there is a conference room, there's the office areas, there is the gym area, everything that was refurbished at one point. What happened, and we typically, what the plan was, and they had put it in place for this past Monday when they really didn't need it, but they thought 94, here we go. They had a plan of reprieve from the heat wherever they were going. And what I found when I visited Deerhill on Monday was teachers had refused to go. They said, "We're fine, we're doing just fine, we don't need it, we're comfortable." They didn't have it. There is one exception, and that's Room 154 that was not in use. It was not used that day at all. And I'll explain that in a minute as to why it was. So, we've been talking, we continue to talk. Brian Joyce is currently pricing out tinting for the inside courtyard that should reduce it. We examined the shades, they're enough to block the air. The teachers have agreed that if they're on the left side, they would air the rooms in the morning and pull the shades in the afternoon. If they were on the right side of the building, they would pull their shades in the morning where most of the sun comes and open their windows later in the afternoon. Exception of 154. 154 is an interior, it is across from the cafeteria. It is the room, if you look at the chart next, I itemized where those hot from the chart we have in Deerhill. Where is the heat that we see in these rooms? They're all, most, 10 of those 10 days are in 154. They're in the 80s. And that was, that 88 was the highest. 150 had only one day where it was above 80, and 130 had three. 154 is an interesting study. It's the music room. It is used four days a week from Tuesday to Friday. Mrs. Lewis is not there on Monday. The children rotate into that room for between 40 and 45 minutes for music. That's the only use for that room. That doesn't mean it shouldn't be comfortable, but there are no windows in that room. She has fans, there is no way to put in air conditioning other than central air. So, when Dr. DiChiara and I spoke about, you know, "Look, that's where the heat is, that's where most of the heat is," she said, "That's a solution that we already have for next year." Next year, we are housing five third-grade classrooms, where we presently have six. That gives us a classroom where the music teacher can rotate. She can also move into the cooler areas for 45 minutes, but that is an option. So, that's another piece that we've been talking about. It was interesting to look at it. I think that the temperature trends are for a committee to decide whether it warrants going to capital budget and going to town meeting, as well as the analysis. But that's where we are right now, and I think that the next step, obviously, in any of this is not here, but to capital budget. And that has to go to subcommittee and then capital budget. But I felt it needed an explanation, so, and I did want to make it clear that we are looking, we are, as I am with the later state start time. They're conversations, but they're beyond my control or our control exclusively. But I thought this was important for me as well, to start looking at, okay, so where is this heat? What is it being used for? Where are the students? How much time are they there? I was comforted to know that students are not in that classroom for the full day. It is a miserable room. It's very hot, it has no windows, and it is diagonally across from the cafeteria, which doesn't help. And the boiler room, so, in the winter, they're comfortable. But that was the update. I hope you appreciate that information for going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for all this work.
I also have the outline of costs that are prohibitive, but we talked about that, the options that Mark put together, that they are, it would take a very large air conditioner to make a difference in a classroom simply because of the space. Also, the cost and the fire issues, we're going from $80,000 to, if we could do the HVAC, $150,000. And obviously, to do it as we would a new school, $370,000 to $550,000. I also know that some new schools have not put air conditioning either. It's state funding that reduces it, and it's a cost on the district when a school is built. So, that is my update.
Louise and I have a question.
Yes.
And so, in Brian's cost estimates, it doesn't include utility.
Correct.
Any incremental cost of utility.
No, no, it does not. That is strictly installation. I'm sure the alternative energy would not be happy with our use of energy. But it's, and I know, and we've all gone through this last several years of trying to convince particularly capital budget and advisory that this was necessary. It's data that we need and a lot of it, if we ever were going to go.
Yeah, we're going to entertain this and go for weather.
And then, put a question, and presumably, you said there's reps looking at the topics, so they come back, as you said, they're continually monitoring it.
I have also checked in with the nurse.
Gotcha.
I thought that Monday, we might look and see what was going on. It was cool, it had a breeze. I was looking at 94, it might have been 80, but I was very comfortable in the building, so.
I had to be in there too.
It's unpredictable, it's a very, and they're unpredictable years. I'm looking at this saying, you know, some years we're getting really hot, other years...
Yeah, it's all over the place, which is, because we're in New England.
It's in New England, you don't like the weather, wait a while.
Yeah.
Wait five minutes.
Wait five minutes.
Is the projected empty third-grade classroom a potential or a more permanent solution for music?
The music room, the music room needs more room than that.
Okay.
And it's a conversation with Mrs. Lewis.
Presumably, it would be like 15 days out of the year, that would be.
Maximum.
Yeah, maximum.
But she can also use the outside.
Right.
If you go by Deerhill right now, in the courtyard, there's a tent.
It's awesome.
And there is also one on the playground. And Ted reminded me today that they're on loan.
Oh.
So, there you go.
Great, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the next item on the agenda is finance.
Terrific.
We're going to talk about, we're going to talk about the human service van.
Yes. My favorite vehicle. So, as we start this conversation, I think we all understand we're coming to the end of the year. We're a week and a half away from the end of the year and the end of fiscal year. So, we're spending a lot of time, good like the jigsaw puzzle, seeing how it's all going to fit together. A little different this year because we're still in school. I don't think I've ever had a case where we didn't have a week, a week and a half, maybe two weeks of uninterrupted time, so it's a little crazy. If you'll, and by the way, I have met with the budget and finance committee, we should see a way that we'll get to the end of the year, we'll pay all our bills, and we should have a little bit of a surplus. Still a couple of placeholders that we've put in there that we're waiting to get some final numbers. Utilities is one of them. And when you're looking at May report, we still have, because of the timing of utility bills, we have for the most part made 10 payments, so we've sold two months of utility bills. They tend to be smaller utility bills than January, February, for instance. But nonetheless, last year, we more or less spent $100,000 on utility bills, so it's expensive. And that's, so if we start with F1.
Yep.
If you look at F1, I guess the big takeaway from this is that if you look at salaries, they look at it, we're spending at a different rate than last year, and that's really primarily for two reasons. One is that May was a prepaid check month, June will be a two-paycheck month. Last year, May was a two-paycheck month, and by the way, payroll is $600,000, $600,000 plus. And June was a prepaid check month. You know, you've got, for those of us who get paid every two weeks, we know that twice a year, we have a three-paycheck month. We'll go, "Yeah, it seems I found money." And it goes back and forth between November, December, May, June, and those are the two months, those are the four months that alternate.
I should know that by now.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't you think?
Don't.
Because I ask the same question every year.
You know, I have gotten paid biweekly for many, many, many years. A very long time ago, I got paid twice a month, first and 15th. And I'm going to tell you, I found the first and 15th a whole lot simpler than getting paid every two months, so it takes a while to adjust to it. And the other part is that in terms of, in terms of salaries, you know, last year, we had some surpluses in salary accounts, primarily due to some unexpected retirements. We had sort of the opposite of that this year. We wound up having to add an ELL teacher in response to some needs from, some requirements. We wound up having to add some one-on-one aids because of some enrollment issues at OSGO. We replaced a language teacher, and finding a language teacher proved to be very expensive. And then finally, we did not have unexpected retirements. So, that's what, those were the challenges in salaries. Having said all of that, between some surpluses that we have in various accounts, we should have some money left at the end of the year, and as I think I mentioned last time, the intention is to prepay some spent tuition. I will also say that the intention is to have all the principals spend down their accounts for stuff. And by that, I mean the books and the teaching supplies and all of that should be fully spent out. We have not frozen spending, we don't need to freeze spending, we're properly budgeting those areas. So, that's what's going on with money. Do you have any questions?
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, John, you had your name up first.
Oh, well, you go first.
Okay. No, I just wanted to follow up with a question, John, on, you instructed, you've instructed the building principals to spend the non-salaried. There's a lot of money there compared to last year. Building by building, is, is it all going to be spent?
I think the bulk of it will be spent, yeah.
Okay.
Along those lines, I...
And I think, and I think that applies on items that they said they were going to get, that they needed.
Okay.
Do we have what we need to do for the literacy study, like the fundamentals?
Foundations.
I'm sorry.
That's where the stuff is going to be spent.
Fundations. I would say, is there, because does that require some hands-on materials that need to be purchased?
It requires teacher materials at this point, and Lisa assures us that that's what she needs, and it is currently in that line item that she can prepay. And that's where, we did that last year, that's why there's money in there now, but that allows us to pay for the foundations.
Sorry, funding, sorry.
It's okay, it's funny.
So, if we look at the grants, moving on to the grants, there's a minor deficit when we get to grants, the balances, that's a timing issue between the beginning of June and roughly the middle of June, we received $125,000 in grant payments items that I filed for at the end of May. So, we have pretty much been paid out for all the grants, we still have some money left, a couple of them that I will be claiming this week, as a matter of fact. No big surprises, we won't run any deficits and we won't be sending much back.
That's good.
Yeah, we will use all our money wisely.
Great.
And in terms of revolving accounts, we're not running any deficits in any of the accounts. It's a little hard to compare year over year because we've had some big changes in some areas. In particular, when you look at gifts, CEF, and PSOs, very different between last year and this year. Last year was the major, major money that we received for the, for the...
Learning commons.
Learning commons, and of course, it's going to look odd next year because we received the money for the most part in the previous year, and we spent a lot of that money this year. And so, expenditures next year will look different in that line item. But all in all, it's been a pretty successful year. I think the budget that people passed for this current year turned out to be the right number, at least, at least in terms of how we expect to end the year and not have large surpluses, nor did we, nor did we have to be free-spending it at the end of the year and say, "No, you can't have it." So, we provided for the program that they expected.
I think, okay, I realize I was out of order before. When will you have all of next year's bus transportation registrations?
They're still coming in.
They're still coming in?
Still coming in, yeah.
We got a very early start.
We got a very early start, we sent information out. In fact, if you look at the warrant, we've already made a refund on next year's, on next year's registration.
Yeah.
So, people are on top of it. I haven't looked at the numbers yet to say, you know, how many people registered this year and how many, in terms of comparing it to last year. And then, the big question, of course, is how many people have registered for best bus service? And oh, by the way, where was that last year? So...
Right. No, it's just the balance is quite healthy, you know, for the end of May right now.
The balance is, the balance is quite healthy, and that really had to do with an adjustment that we made last year in terms of funding, bringing some additional funding into that account.
Oh, right.
Because we had been frankly lapping. We'd been, we hadn't, because it's a revolving fund, it doesn't have a fiscal year beginning or end, we were in a position of inadvertently taking next year's, next year's receipts and using it against current year expenses.
I remember now.
Yeah, it just happened.
Did a letter go out too with the fine schedule on the bus? Because we had that last year, you know, you don't register by...
Yes.
That went out.
That went out, and in fact, it's, and in fact, it's effective. If, I know when I look at the receipts that there, a lot of them came in before June 1st. And in fact, on that Friday before, and I forgot what day June 1st was, what day the week was, but the Friday before, I got two calls from very earnest people who said, "I'm trying to pay online and I can't, but I want the discount, you know, what can you do for me?" And I said, "If you send, you know, I'll write your name down, if you put the check in the mail and I have it Monday, it'll be fine, you'll get the discount." And I had a similar conversation with somebody else. They said that, "I came by and I didn't see anybody there, but I wanted to pay you, can I still get the discount?"
Right.
I said, "Absolutely."
Good.
I wanted to get mine in so quickly that I forgot to save them and look at the receipt thing.
There you go. So, that, so that happened. It seems like it's gone pretty smoothly so far this year. Two years ago was, didn't go as well as we'd like. It seemed a little crazy. Last year, we came up with graduated fee schedule that said, you know, "Pay 90, you get a discount, pay a little later, cost a little more, and in the end, if we have space, we'll take you, but you're going to pay the most." If you will, the opposite of buying a seat on an airline. And it seems to have worked. And this year, a whole lot less questions about that. Not that we were inundated, but we did get several questions last year when people said, "So, exactly how does this work?" And we get those this year.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, yeah, it seems to be going okay.
Very good.
Bus maintenance log? So, let's start my favorite one at first, which is a van. It is, the food service van has a Donbree park, it's gone 2,000 miles since we first got it about a year and a half ago. It's the reason why we keep it for 10, 15 years. It's been a terrific vehicle, we haven't had any issues. It is, it is refrigerated, as you know, so I think it's probably more suitable than what we had before, which was an un-air-conditioned van that was painted dark blue. I mean, when you think about that, that probably wasn't the best, the best idea.
Good point.
But it gave us many years of service. So, a couple of things that were, I got a question from Ellen about two of the items on this. One was a change in mileage for bus number 90736. We magically lost a couple thousand miles in that, was because of a mistake. Somebody had, had recorded in a previous month 35,000 and some number, and it should have been 33,000. And I learned something about how the, about how the formula is set up. And so, behind this page are individual sheets for every, for every... And so behind this page or is, or individual sheets for every, for every vehicle, and I think people may remember, we used to go trees, it's about a thirty-three page report. And there's a column that has mileage in it, and the, and, and that automatically populates this cover page. Just as, sorry, and the formula, and the formula picks the largest number. So, when I was looking at it, yeah, so if you look at it quickly, you may see the last number looks like the right number, but somewhere in, in the detail was, was the wrong number. So, this is indeed the accurate number if you're, if you're looking, if you're looking at those things. And a question came up about, um, bus number.
Nine oh seven three.
Thank you very much, I can't follow that across. And that has a high maintenance number, and, and what's going on? And there was some auto body work that happened on that vehicle. I'm still expecting a insurance recovery for a portion of it. And so when that comes in, it'll come in as a negative number. Since this is a revolving fund, and a school revolving fund, it will come back to this account, and it is not related to, to a fiscal year. But I will, I'd actually sort of forgotten about waiting for the, the recovery, so I will follow up with them. Since it is a school bus, and if there's anything that happens, we will file a claim, but we will go ahead and repair the vehicle right away. You know, if, if there's any question about the sharp metal, dent, bent vehicles, any of that kind of stuff, it needs to be smooth and, and clean, or it's, or it's a safety hazard.
Yep.
So that has happened before, where we will deal with the repair and, and wait for the money to show up.
I asked the same question when I was reviewing the bills, I'm like, what the heck?
Yeah, what the heck?
What happened to this? And we, and we had discussed it before that, but it was, it was kind of a lag time between that and the bill.
Here it is. Buses have been well, they really have, knock on wood. And in fact, the total maintenance cost is, is still less, just about, little less than what was budgeted in, in terms of the model that was put together, even, even with this amount. So, so we're living within the budget.
Very good.
I've, I've heard stories about the last few years before you went to this model, and I, I thank you for not making me go through that. It sounds like it was intensely painful, and perhaps even unreliable. I mean, you know, we had, we could not find enough buses these last few weeks, between tournament play-
Yeah.
And field trips. I mean, we got to the point where we ran out of buses or drivers or both, so did Sichewa that we share buses with, and Hingham that we rent buses from, and a couple of the commercial places, three of the commercial places we deal with. So it has been a little crazy, and having said all of that, you know, we have, this past week, sent buses to Boston several times and other field trips, and, and, you know, knock on wood, we've had no problems. But mostly, we have no concerns about, about sending a bus to Boston and expect it to go over there and come back and not have any mechanical problems.
That's great.
So I thank you.
One more trip Saturday. One more trip.
One more trip Saturday, yeah, yeah.
Christopher's field, Boston University.
They just, they just reserved it today, as a matter of fact. So, yeah, it's, um-
It's exciting. Great.
It's exciting. Be glad to answer any questions you have.
Does anyone have any questions? No, great.
And, and, thank you.
Thank you. So next is school community comments and communication. And the first item on this list, anxiously awaited, is the superintendent's summative review. The first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to hand back everybody's paperwork so you can sign them, and then I'll explain the process. I thought it was an electronic signature, that's why I did that. What, you did that as well?
Yeah, I did. I will sign it anyway, but I didn't have to.
I can sign over it.
Okay, I want you to hold on to these.
Oh.
So we're, we're gonna do something a little bit different this year.
Okay.
Okay. Because as I looked at this, let me just sign mine, so I don't forget. So in the past, it's always awkward when we sit here in public on television and discuss the superintendent's performance. So this year, I did things a little bit differently in that I thought that usually, in the past when I've been in charge of the summary, I've done the, um, the evaluation, gone through each of the evaluations, and I've done my little total and put the, the numbers where they belonged. And then at the end, I summarized some of the comments. So tonight, for tonight, I did do the same thing, but I listed how many commented in the various categories, so that I will cover that as I go through. But then I would appreciate it if each of you would take one of the comments that you made that was kind of dear to your hearts.
They all are.
They, no, they all are, but, sorry. There's some great information here, and I can't read it all, but it would be great if you would each pick one section that you will read at the end after we go through the summary. Okay? So I will begin. There's a bug in here, it's annoying. All right, so first is assess progress toward goals. Under professional practice goal, everyone felt that you had met them. Under student learning goals, you met those. And district improvement goals, you've met all of those. So next item is assess performance on standards. And there are a variety of indicators in each of these. The first is unsatisfactory, then needs improvement, then proficient, and then exemplary. So under standard one, instructional leadership, four members felt that you were proficient, and one marked you exemplary. Under standard two, management and operations, all five voted for proficient. Under standard three, community, uh, family and community engagement, there were four proficient and one exemplary. And for, under standard four, professional culture, there were two proficient and three exemplary. Next is on step three, rate overall summative performance, and you were noted three proficient and two exemplary. And your impact on student learning was, it was one moderate and three high. And that doesn't add up to five, but, um-
I forgot to put mine in.
Yeah, and some, I, this is such a confusing process, so don't take anything personal.
I don't.
Okay, on your performance goals, so goal number one, which I, this was a little bit confusing too, because people had different items in the different areas. So the first professional practice goal was conduct collaborative class observations with leadership team to evaluate teaching and learning across the district. And you met that goal. Four people felt you met, and one actually felt that you exceeded. Number two, there were four met and one exceeded, and that was conduct leadership opportunities that develop administrators' understanding of students and their base of understanding as it focuses on appreciation of diversity. So number three, organize wellness committee to include SEL and supports for student health and wellness in order to document courses, activities, and support the school district's supports for the well-being of its students. So you met that goal with four met and one exceeded. And number four, continue the organization and supervision of the middle school study to include analysis of curriculum, environment slash culture, and structure. And the summary was exceeded because one voted met and three voted exceeded. So the summary I put down for exceeded for that one. There were some other notes in this section? And we'll get to that when we read our comments. So student, superintendent's performance rating for standard one instructional leadership. For curriculum, one voted proficient and four exemplary. So I marked the summary as exemplary. Instruction, two proficient and three exemplary. Assessment, everyone voted proficient. Evaluation, all five voted proficient. And on data-informed decision-making, there were three proficient and two exemplarys. And then the overall rating for standard one was proficient. Sorry, I lost my place one minute. I really lost my place.
Standard two.
Yep, yep, yep. Just wanted to make sure I was reading the right copy. Okay. So, overall rating for standard one was proficient. Okay, so superintendent's performance rating for standard two, which is management and operations, under environment, four voted proficient, one exemplary. Under human resources, management and development, three proficient and two exemplary. Scheduling and management information systems, all five voted proficient. Under law, ethics and policies, one proficient and four exemplary. And under fiscal systems, four proficient and one exemplary. And the overall rating for standard two was proficient based on those. Superintendent's performance rating for standard three, family and community engagement. Under three A engagement, five were proficient. Under sharing responsibility, three proficient and two exemplary. Under three C communication, five proficient. And under family concerns, four proficient and one exemplary, with an overall rating for standard three of proficient. And then superintendent's performance rating for standard four, professional culture. Commitment to high standards, one voted proficient and four selected exemplary. Under cultural proficiency, one selected proficient and four exemplary. Communication, three proficient and two exemplary. Continuous learning, two proficient and three exemplary. Shared vision, three proficient and two exemplary. And managing conflict, two proficient and three exemplary. For, an overall rating of standard fi- standard four, sorry. Professional culture, your overall rating was exemplary. And now for the show and tell. Okay, so just take a minute and review your comments, and I just printed these off exactly as you sent them to me, so.
I can't decide.
I know, I'm, I'm debating between the two. If you give them to me, I'll decide.
I can decide mine.
Sure.
Okay, well, can I pick two?
Yes.
Well, well, we'll go through one after.
Well, go through it, and if there's another one that you wanna do, that's fine, okay? So do you wanna start?
Well, do we wanna go in order of them, or do we just wanna go in order of what I wanna do?
No, you just, you pick the one that features-
Okay.
That you wanna share the most, and then if you wanna share another one at the end, we have time.
Okay, well, I have one from a, a standard and one about the goals. Comments on those goals.
Okay.
I think, oh no, this is the summative, actually, it's the summative. I'll just read the summative first. I'll just say, in some, the superintendent is very strong on all indicators and sub-indicators on the DESI superintendent rubric, 'cause it is a very set rubric that you, I, I sit there with a rubric as I'm thinking of this. And comments under each standard generally summarize ratings for those categories. So only add that in addition to satisfying benchmarks in each of the four categories, instructional leadership management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. Mrs. Demas is a particularly effective leader for the district due to her deep understanding of curriculum and instruction. This understanding, along with some key administrative hires and her ability to communicate and facilitate team building, will make positive changes in teaching and learning and should have a significant impact on student learning and achievement. So my point there was kind of like, this metric's been exemplary in a lot of indicators, but I feel like that's sort of cherry on top in this situation is we have a real instructional leader, which I think a lot of districts nowadays, the way education is structured, do not have. And it allows us to really make some imp- impactful change, like you're hearing about, in PBL and UDL and co-teaching. Like those things just don't happen. And like with middle school study, that was not an easy thing to pull off. And I'm actually amazed, having worked in a variety of schools, to see how that went down.
Thank you. When Superintendent Demas first joined us as superintendent, there were many things that needed to be fixed here. One such project was looking at the culture in our middle high school. The one school concept was not working for the middle school, affecting students and personnel alike. Under her leadership, taking a hard look at why the culture was suffering at times was not embraced by the administration. By looking outside the district to a professional organization specializing in such deep dives, we received a true analysis of what was needed to remedy this situation. While still in process, there are already signs of a new hopeful attitude in the school, and I look forward to seeing the changes unfold. There have been a number of very trying situations over the past year, and Louise has tenaciously and professionally worked to resolve each as they occurred. Finally, Louise has worked tirelessly to create a positive and collaborative relationship with the CTA, which led to a relatively swift agreement between their bargaining unit and the school committee. This speaks to the level of respect our staff have for the superintendent, and she reflects that respect back on them. The fact that she was herself a teacher in the district, and then the assistant superintendent of curriculum, made her a well-rounded candidate when we first approached her to lead the district, and has paid off in the relationships previously mentioned. Her underlying commitment to doing what is best, excuse me, what is best for students only cements her success in her role as superintendent. At the end of the day, that is, that is our business, and we should never lose sight of that. Her ability to work across school and town relationships is also an important trait. She has worked tirelessly to ensure her leadership team understands the difference between wants and needs, enabling us to present budgets within the town manager's recommended numbers, which support the town's five-year financial plan. I could go on, as her commitment to SEL and UDL, bringing experts to the district to assist in these efforts and ensure a caring school community do not go unnoticed by the school committee and the school community as a whole. Ellen?
Okay.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I'm good.
Do you need some?
Pollen voice.
No, that's, that's exactly what it is, and I must've just taken a breath.
Okay, I'll read what I wrote under standard four, professional culture. Superintendent Demas expects no less of her, of her staff than she expects of herself. She has woven cultural diversity elements into many facets of her leadership, from staff ratings to classroom practice. The recognition that staff may also have SEL issues themselves and implementing programs to address staff needs is insightful. And empowering the assistant superintendent to overhaul our professional development and engage teachers in the development and execution of professional development created ownership and a shared vision with the staff that was previously untamed.
My mom wrote on sentence. Turn. Um, they're acceptable when they compliment you.
My first one. The cohesive public school district is an exciting, dynamic, and engaged educational community where stakeholders are dedicated to student life and mindful of community values beyond the classroom. Louise's commitment to true collaboration is evident. Simply put, the district is an energetic and- Simply put, the district is an energetic and inviting place to be where respectful conversations aimed at improving student achievement take place regularly. Louise first and foremost listens to those in the Cohasset educational community. For issues that require systematic decision-making, Louise creates clear paths for thoughtful collaboration. This is evident in her careful scheduling of classroom observations, data collection, time plan for discussion, professional development, consideration of research-based programs, securing necessary resources, partnering with the community, and communica- communicating with the school committee and other town committees. Decisions and actions are the results of careful consideration, consultation with experts, and buy-in with those responsible for implementation. In her short term as superintendent, Cohasset Public Schools are already starting to show the results of her meticulous, steady, and methodical leadership. This year, the Joseph Osgood School completed a literacy study for grades K through five, which will have a direct impact on student achievement. The middle school created a vision statement and an action plan for improving student outcomes. A wellness committee has been formed in partnership with the Cohasset Safe Harbor Coalition. And contract negotiations, negotiations with the CTA and custodians were completed. These are just a few examples of the district's initiatives that Louise has completed. The Cohasset Public School District has flourished under Louise's leadership.
I'm sorry, I can't handle the ego. And I invited Mrs. Dugan to participate also, because she was here for most of the year, with the exception of a couple of meetings, so please.
Thanks, so I am going to read a comment from family and community engagement. Superintendent Demas submitted seventeen pieces of evidence related to family and community engagement in support of the work during PSO team. Louise engaged the community in dialogues on a number of fronts, including school security, selection of assistant superintendent and Deer Hill school principal, diversity, social and emotional learning and wellness, and start school later. She has gone out of her way to make sure her door is open to the community and attends PSO, leadership, CF, and other community events to engage the parents and citizens of Cohasset in an open dialogue. I would like to praise Louise for continued efforts to collaborate with the town and commi- community. She does not operate the district which silos itself, but rather has extended a hand in partnership with, first, the town in co-conduing such services as Interface, the school committee, uh, to bring the educator spotlight series to meetings to inform parents of the innovative instruction happening in the buildings, to, uh, community partnerships like CSCR and Holly Hill, where we extend the curriculum into the community, and Safe Harbor Coalition and Dr. Barbara Green regarding our student health and wellness. And I do have to give a shout out on the middle school study. The fact that you took a two-year role and brought it to fruition, goes without saying, it was dear, near and dear to my heart.
Thank you. Thank you. I need a stool to put my feet. All I can say is well done and thank you.
Thank you.
Very kind. So I need that back. So we feel tired.
You get a chance to leave the comments.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Jean, you don't have the final look at copies of the finals?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you for letting us do that and share that.
Yeah. On to my next leadership binder.
It's always, it's always awkward.
Well, it's.
Always awkward.
It's helpful to hear the individual comments too.
Yes. All right, so I'm going to hand this down to Louise for safekeeping. And I will email you the summary. Thank you.
Thank you very much, all of you.
You're very kind. I do feel tired. I, I think it's been collaborative, and I, I do have to add that nothing happens in isolation. Nothing happens about the support of a school committee, who will listen and give me the, the go-ahead and the trust to do things that seem a little bit outside the comfort zone. I've been very fortunate for people who have applied to take on positions such as Patrick, and I can't minimize the fact that John has not only been a, a business manager, but also a mentor. So, and Sue Skieber, who's, who's continued to support some of the initiatives. And some, you know, Alex, who has stepped up, and Lisa, who has come on board, and a leadership that's willing to be very honest, candid, and say, hey, wait a minute, I don't like this. And to be able to have some very honest conversations. But I have to say that it's been a trying year with many bumps in the road. And every time I think there can't be something else, I haven't attached myself to it, there it is. But that being given, knowing that you basically have my back, I feel that I'm confident to take those. So, my thanks is to you, because again, it's not done in isolation. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think you could probably write a manual on superintendency by crisis, because you've had two consecutive years of, with a plethora of different, from, from human resource issues to playground issues.
Start with the first week, and you sat at the desk.
Right, and so I think the trend will continue. Just brace yourself.
Feeling, you know.
Let's not forget about the phone.
All the phones, right, right.
Starting a year with no phones, no bells, no phones. A letter from the MAAB on get your playground in order, we're coming after you. That was my first day. And it just got better. It's, it's been a challenge, but like I said, it's never a mo.
Off topic, but that playground issue is very interesting, because someone that I know very well is watching children this summer and took her charges to a playground in another town, which will remain nameless. And she came home and said, I can't believe that place, I hate it, it's brand new. She said, it's so dangerous. Where are they on that stuff? It's a town, it's a town playground. It's very odd. Like I said, I'm not going to out that community, but it was a little alarming when she came home upset, because you would think that she'd be all good with it if the kids were happy there, but anyway. So next is the subcommittee, et cetera. Does anybody have any subcommittee reports that they want to go?
I, I do. So, hi Katie, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you Katie.
Before the minutes.
Thank you very much. But I didn't announce them yet.
And I'm going to talk about PEB. Give a quick update, there was another PEB meeting last week with all of the liaisons. Brian Host from Capital, Paul Carlson from Advisory, and Diane Kennedy from Board of Selectment. So, every entity is represented, and basically what they strategize to get done is benchmarking other towns in terms of the healthcare splits and/or if other towns have policies regarding reserve funds into, into PEB trust now, post-employment benefit trust. So it'll be interesting to see where we shake out on, on that issue. Everyone's favorite topic, there's a Hall of Fame meeting next Monday night. A slate of candidates will be presented for that committee to vote on. Yay. Are you excited?
I, I, I can't contain myself.
I know. I know.
You'll notice that I didn't know that they left school off of, off of the handbook.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And then just one more quick thing for the committee. In, on, in front of us, we received today a draft of an outline for next year's school calendar. I know it's not on the agenda, but I just wanted everyone to, I'm preparing the recap of our FY18 goals to see where we landed out. And I've been going through every note and binder I have, just to see what I have. If anyone has specific comments on how, on certain goals or sub-goals that they feel should be articulated, please feel free to email me, and just email me so it doesn't become a conversation. A couple of things that I might need help on would be literacy and the D cap tier goal that we had.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, just, just to, just to ascertain if you, if members felt we met those goals or not, because I'm, I'm kind of on the fence on those.
I'm definitely hoping to check in on those.
Okay.
So I have my opinions on that and data.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Um, CPAC had their end of the year get-together at the corner stop, so.
Oh, that was really nice.
Yeah, it was very nice, so it's, it's always a, a fun event to look forward to at the end of the year. And, um, yeah, it's just been a nice collaborative, um, relationship. And, um, I love the CPAC leadership and think they've done a wonderful job and just have a really nice communication going on with it.
Great.
Leadership.
Great. Well, I should have an alternative energy update for everyone, but I was kind of busy with the superintendent of operations.
My fault.
And I didn't have time to go through it, but I will get that for you. And there is another meeting on Monday night, next Monday night, so there'll be even more information. I have to say, though, the alternative energy committee. I was disappointed today, I couldn't get to the Cohasset Care Sustainability Symposium, because I'm very interested in what the environmental effects of gas versus hybrid and electric cars might be. And I had planned to go to that, and then at the last minute, I couldn't get out of the office. So, I might try and see if I can do one of these next ones. Did everybody get, everybody got this, right? You gave an email.
Oh, no.
I didn't print it out.
I remember seeing it.
I printed it, because last year, all of the times were times I couldn't go. So I printed it, because there were actually times that I should have been able to go, and I couldn't get out of the office at 12:30 today, so. But that would have been interesting. I did forward it to the chair of the alternative energy committee and offered to get her a ticket. And she had already communicated with the, the, she and the librarian at the high school have a relationship because of this class. And her interest in that. So she was going to come, and I don't know what section she came to. I do also want to mention that the MAS-C, MAS-S joint conference information has come out. And went to Jennifer, do we have printouts of that? You'll probably all get it in your mailbox at home. But she said that she got information. About registration. And registration, I'll just tell you that registration is due by, I think, July 15th. So if you're thinking that you can go to one or all the days, you can, Paul, you can go to just one if that works for your schedule, or you can go to all four.
I can have her send the PDF.
That'd be great, because we haven't received it in the mail yet.
Paul, this is the November conference down in Hyannis. The MAS-C that Jean was talking about. And it starts on a Wednesday night and goes through Saturday morning, and there's all kinds of really interesting workshops. And we tend to pick and choose which ones you want to go to, what's of interest. So like, if I went to something last year, I'm not going to repeat that, obviously, I'll try to find something different. I can only get down there for an afternoon because of my work schedule, so it's whatever you can do.
I have a business inside there.
Oh.
Yeah. I know it pretty well, and the committee, so I'll definitely be there for it.
Okay, great. And as I said, if you could only make it for one day, that's fine.
No.
If you could do more, that's great too.
Jean, are we supposed to, if, do, I don't know, I don't know how this works. Do you put a sub of a whole for that, or?
No.
Like, it doesn't matter.
It does, it's exempt from meeting law.
So we're allowed to, like, okay.
We're not going to sit there and talk about Cohasset business. We wouldn't sit and talk about Cohasset business, because that would be, that would violate the law in New York. But we can attend conferences and meetings.
We can talk, we can sit down.
Yeah, we speak to each other, that's. Yeah, you just can't come to any consensus over.
You can't deliberate over an active topic that hasn't been discussed already.
Exactly.
Okay.
And then also one more thing. You may have received this in the mail. It's about the MAS-C Summer Institute. There's some interesting subjects on here, and I think I might want to go to this. It's in Marlborough, which is kind of a hike. But there is something about accountability. There's an alert on accountability and changes that are coming. So that kind of struck me. And then there's information on social and emotional learning, what school committee members need to know and do. And then goal setting and monitoring, which we seem to do well, that's fine. But there's also a session on high school start times, restorative justice, and school and student safety, keeping our schools safe for learning. And for the two-day registration, it's only seventy-five dollars. So it, I think it's a great opportunity if any of these, these are of interest to you. And the district pays gross to participate in these things, Paul, so you know.
And that's a Friday, Saturday?
Yes, yep. Friday afternoon starts at four.
In Marlborough.
In Marlborough.
What was the date again?
The twenty.
Twenty-first, twenty-first?
Yes.
July?
Yes, Friday and Saturday, July twentieth and twenty-first.
Yeah, and there's a cut rate if you want to stay over at the hotel.
Hundred thirty-five dollars at the hotel. Yeah.
So.
They have some good stuff this month.
Yep, they do.
So while we're talking about that, can we just segue back to the Project Based Learning Summit on July twenty-sixth? Twenty-sixth, I, I clearly heard Jack say, you know, we were invited, I think he would welcome participation. I think up to two of us could go, because I think three is a quorum, even though we're not talking about school business, would we post it?
I think this would, would make the exception, though.
Okay. All right.
He would serve in different groups, he would not be, yeah.
It would be, it's the next week after this.
Yeah, it's Thurs- it's a Thursday, July twenty-sixth.
The way it's structured, everybody's coming in as a learner, so it's, it's very.
Yeah.
Spread out.
I texted myself while he was talking, I was not distracted, I was texting myself the date, so I could go home and check through it.
Yes, and it's the week after this, the following week, after the Summer Institute.
I don't think I can do the Summer Institute, I'm going to try to get to it.
Even if you drop in on the Summer Institute, you can do that. I mean, you don't have to commit to the whole day if you want to.
There's one I definitely want, I'd be willing to do that.
I don't think I can give that a whole.
Oh, no, you mean the, the Jeff Buckley.
Yes.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
The Summer Institute is.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Are you sure it's, it wouldn't screw up for like, show up at noon? Because on time, I'd figure out how to get out of work.
Yeah, for a whole day.
I, I can't imagine, I would imagine that's structured into different modules and stuff like that.
Not at all, I think it would be to, to, to visit and to, to be part of the day.
You could jump into a group?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's a very flexible day, that I think you, you can go in and out if you need to. It's very, obviously, hands-on.
Yeah.
From having our discussion with Jack, yeah, it should include more than the nature aspect. They were looking at realtors, professional people in the district. As far as they can go, to really be inclusive to the community.
Okay.
Okay, and we still, we still don't know what we're going to do about having MAS-C come and do a workshop for us this summer. I'm thinking I'm going to request a list of presentations that they can put on and see if there's something that speaks to the whole committee. And hopefully I'll have some information for our next meeting, we can figure that out.
They summarize some of their institute stuff.
Yeah, well, see, I'm thinking that the Summer Institute almost takes the place of that. I don't know if we, if we really need to do a workshop with them. Because we really do need to sit and go through our goals and figure that out.
Right, well, we need to do that.
That's like a whole meeting.
Yeah.
So when do you think we should do that, Jean?
What the?
Go through the goals and.
Oh, it'll be one of the meetings in, in July.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because then we have to, yeah.
Okay, does anybody else have anything?
Oh, okay.
No? Okay, so next on the agenda is approval of minutes. This is when Abigail gets up and leaves, which is the only one who's ever still here.
I get ready.
Okay. All right, so first is the school committee minutes of the public hearing that was held on Wednesday, May second, two thousand eighteen. And I, I just have one comment. The board came out of executive session and re-entered open session and the posted public hearing. And.
Re-entered.
The board came out of executive session and re-entered open session for the purpose of a posted public hearing at six forty-seven PM. Does anybody else have any comments on that? Okay, could I have a motion? Okay, could I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of Wednesday, May second, uh, public hearing, uh, Wednesday, May second, two thousand eighteen, public hearing on school choice, um, as amended?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Jen, second.
Okay. And also, Tracy, at the top.
Shall we vote?
Where, yeah, just a second. Could you please, um, we're at a school committee minute, minutes, public hearing, could you make it say, public hearing on school choice, please? Thank you. Okay, so, all in favor?
All right.
I. I agree.
Yep.
Yeah, I took the, the motion and the second.
And then, sorry, I'm just gonna do this, so you make the edits and then you send them back to me, and then I send them to Jen's readers?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'll just cross-check it with them for us, so that I can do it. Okay, great.
Yeah, Tracy will send them, yeah, you know Barb's charge of minutes, okay. Not that I don't like you, Tracy, but it's two years I'm gone.
Move on.
I tend not to read them in my packet if I have sent them in the first place.
Okay, second is school committee minutes for Wednesday, May second, two thousand eighteen, and that's the regular school committee meeting, and... I have a question on report of subcommittees. Oh, wait a minute, faculty hiring update, which is about halfway down on the second page. Mrs. Demus updated the committee on faculty, a central office bookkeeper will start when the new business manager starts. I think that should say, will be identified.
Or will be hired?
Or will be hired. And then, under report of subcommittees, that's where I got the, the question. LMR stated that the athletic hall of fame induction ceremony will be Thanksgiving weekend in two thousand eighteen, or twenty-twenty, the ceremony may be moved to the summer to co- instead of accommodate, I just changed the wording a little bit, may be moved to the summer to coincide with Cohasset's two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary celebration. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Does anybody else have any comments? No? Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Cohasset School Committee for Wednesday, May second, two thousand eighteen?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we don't have follow-up updates tonight. There are no topics not reasonably anticipated, but we do have the need for executive session for exemption number three, exemption of the open media law for number three, strategy related to collective bargaining ESPs. We will reconvene in public session to adjourn. Do I have a motion to, to executive session for this purpose?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
Aye, Paul Kearney.
Hi, Barbara Stetson.
And Jean Estino.
Hi, LMR.